I'd also like to thank everybody for coming out on this night and taking the interest. I'm real sorry we didn't plan this many people to be here tonight, but we had to have to cheer us up. But I really appreciate you coming out tonight to take interest in what we're doing. I get to talk about the good things, and then I'm gonna pass over to him in the film. And I'm gonna talk about what we're gonna do, and then I'm gonna pass over to Ron. And Ron's gonna talk about how we're gonna do that and what the traffic plan is gonna look like. And then we're at the end of the night, we're gonna open it up for any questions. And so please don't leave tonight with a question. Hopefully, we can get to everybody here. And if the questions or the time allotment quits, we'll hang around here and answer questions. And hopefully, everybody will leave satisfied with the answers that they get. First thing I want to talk about is safety. In being construction and being on the alignment, I'm aware of the traffic issues that we're faced with. And I'm aware of what happens. And it really hit home for me this past week because I had one of my flagmen that was flagging. And he was standing out and he had his lollipop up that said, "Stop." And the car didn't stop. And unfortunately, we had to take him, emergency services had to get him and take him on. And he had to see metal care and go to come back. So I'm real concerned with the safety. I'm equally or more concerned with the public safety. And so we are doing what we can. And we want to be good neighbors, and we want to do what we can to make things more palatable and make things safe, safe for the people that are here. I've got a few notes, I'm gonna miss a few things, but I'll try to get through this part as quick as I can. As you can see, the 19 kilometers of what we're doing. We've got 19 kilometer route separated from river traffic. 10 kilometers are underground, 9 kilometers are on the surface. 9 kilometers on the surface, we're here to talk about Leslie tonight. And we're talking about what we're doing on the surface. And I hope that you leave here excited about what's going on. If you come by Pharmacy here lately, you've seen rail being installed. And that wasn't planned to happen until much later. We moved it forward. We're gonna try to complete everything we can complete on the overground and get as much as we can completed this year before the weather hurts bad towards the end of this year. We've got 15 underground stations. And I've had a lot of questions. I didn't bring very many pictures of the underground stations, but I've had a lot of questions here tonight about the underground stations. People say that they're driving down Eglinton, and they don't see anything. No. They're underground. But I can tell you, if you were to go underground, what you'd see is, in some cases, you could see 30-meter holes. And you'd see where we are starting to build back up. You'd also see stations such as Keel's Delve that are part of the final route. And then we will be backfilling Keel's Delve. And that opens up our test track. So what you would see is, you'd see that we are on schedule. And we're on schedule to complete this on the 29th day of September 2021. We've got a maintenance facility that's in now. I also had a lot of questions earlier tonight about the maintenance facility. Are you gonna have the vehicles to test? Our contract said we would have six vehicles here at this time. We've got six vehicles. We've got six vehicles in that maintenance facility, and we're ready to test. And so things are happening as they're supposed to. There are problems. They're... My job to make problems less, and there's always gonna be some of those. But we're on target. Transit communication system that links the 54 bus routes, three subway stations, Gull, and the Oak Express. We go to the next page. This really gets me excited when I start looking at that. And that's the lineup. That's what you're gonna see. And what you see at Pharmacy right now is the guideway. That's this section right here where the train sets. And you see the track being installed in the top layer going on that right now. We'll come back and we will, the OCS, that's the area on the top. That's how we'll power the trains. That area right there will be done later this year. It'll be done in the main timeframe when we get the OCS equipment in. And then you see the two lanes on either side. And then you got a dedicated bike lane, followed with a crosswalk or pedestrian.
What's OCS?
Overhead line equipment. OCS is the power, is this step right here is the power for the train. Sorry about that.
It stands for Overhead Continuity System. Alright, continuity, great, okay.
Okay, one thing I didn't say at the very start of this, I knew I'd leave some off. But we've got staff here from TTC, we've got staff here from MetroLinks. We've got a lot of staff around here tonight. So any questions that we can't answer, somebody in this room can answer. And so don't leave with anything. If you look at the, oh, we already moved over. Our major work to be occurring at Leslie through 2019. Major work and what we've got to do is, this isn't Bathurst. And it's nothing like what we were proposing to do at Bathurst. Bathurst, we were looking to make a scheduled game by doing some things different. And this is not Bathurst. This is how Leslie was always gonna be done. It's written in our contract that way. And so this is what the plan was from the start. That's what we're enacting with Leslie. So when you get into the questions, we'll talk a little bit more about that. The guideway, this is how the guideway is constructed. We come down, and we dig it out, and then we've gotta come back up with fill. And then we put our ducking in. And then we put a top layer on, cover it up, our ducking, and then we cover it up. And then the very top, the rail is embedded rail, is embedded into the concrete. And that's what's being installed now. The next slide is gonna talk about what our schedule is. And if you went around, you probably had a few questions about this. The things that I'd like to point out about this is there's no two adjacent intersections blocked at any one time. And so when you're out here, the detours are minimal. They're one area and one area only. I know there's been a lot of questions about timeframes. And the timeframes that we said we would do things and the timeframes that we have listed up here. What have we done to minimize that effect and guarantee we're gonna meet these timeframes? We put a lot more staff on it. And if you're out working right now, we're going through every aspect of the plan, even to the point that I want to turn it into all-weather, an all-weather plan. We're looking at putting up some portable tents to keep any weather out. So as the rainy season starts, we can keep that out, and we can continue our assembly lines and remain on the plan or ahead of plan. We're not gonna go back to behind plan, we're gonna on our head. Ron, I'm gonna turn it over to Ron, my colleague right here. And he's gonna take you through the traffic management plan. He's gonna take you through a little bit of that. And then we'll open it up for any questions and answers. Thank you.
So we wanted to provide a little bit of context before I start talking about the details of the Leslie. So as Steve said, this is the big year for the upgrade section. From the corridor west of Leslie, all the way over to Pan Station. And this is where the effort has to be put in to put in this concrete guideway and the track, and then give the intersection, and have the intersection pretty close to final condition. And in order to do that, some of the timelines, if you look at this, these are the stations that from the top is Leslie, moving further east to Ironview. And then we have a calendar that goes January to December. And then the bars show you the duration of the different activities and what's going on. So for example, there's work that's just been finished in Credit Union Swift to return it back to normal. Vermontie Sloan is to start shortly. And in order to do everything at the intersection of Vermontie Sloan, you can see paving on the south side, six weeks, paving on the north side, six weeks, and then the guideway, six weeks. So that's 18 weeks in total, to give some comparison to what we're talking about last week's meeting. And then you'll see there's a staggering of things, as Steve said, so that no two intersections are being done at the same time. So when you're working on Vermontie Sloan, Credit Union Swift is open, Victoria Park is open. The guideway's just being finished off in Eglinton Square. You start working on Pharmacy. When you're working on Pharmacy, the park is open and Wharton is open, okay? And so that type of approach follows all the way down. You're working on Murchmount, Wharton isn't affected and Kennedy isn't affected. So that's one of the principles, to make sure that on each side of it, there are alternate routes. In order to do it, and this is all to happen through the course of 2019. So this is being distributed, six weeks, 12 weeks, 18 weeks. These are the timeframes that are being dealt with across the entire corridor. We go to the next slide. So before we start talking about managing traffic and movement during construction, I wanted to just at least give you an idea of what's being built up. Now, Steve already showed a big slide. This isn't come along, put some paving down, put a speed roller across it, and you're done. Slap some pavement, parking, and you're good. You gotta do this big deep trench here right down to the guideway. They've gotta put in all the communication. They've gotta put in concrete. They gotta put the track in the concrete all the way through. They also have to do the entire reconstruction of all this area. And get ready for the station and everything. So this is no small job. Why can't you do it on a couple of weekends, alright? There's a lot going on here. You've got grades, you've got other things going on that are part of it. Just to give you some context. We're the next slide. So what is CrossLinks doing right now? CrossLinks is currently seeking city permits. We have to get city permits for the temporary eight-week restriction of vehicles traveling between Leslie and Eglinton Avenue. And we're gonna go into much more detail about that. As I said, this allows for the LRT guideway construction and the track installation. Eglinton Avenue will remain open in both directions at all times. Back and forth, east-west on Eglinton, all the time we'll be able to do that. Buses will be able to go back and forth on Eglinton all the time. Cyclists will be able to go back and forth, okay? Leslie Street will otherwise function normally north of Eglinton. I'll go into some more details. In preparation for that, the work that's going on at the other intersections, traffic lanes will be opened up and turn restrictions lifted at Babyu and Eglinton and at Don Mills and Eglinton before this Leslie work starts. And I'll show you that next slide. I know everyone's gonna applaud. People want them to cape at the parking lot at Babyu and Eglinton. Because I know it's been tough, but I know Don Mills and Eglinton has been interesting at times. And the proposal is to do this during the lowest traffic volume months of the year, July and August. And that's not by accident, that's on purpose, okay? Next slide. So emergency services access to and from Eglinton Avenue maintained at all times. We have a transportation management committee that meets every two weeks. Everybody's represented. Every single plan is cleared with police, paramedics, and fire to make sure that they can still perform their job and serve as community. We'll take questions after the...
Well, as they say that, we may say that, but I know to people specifically that we're trying to get to Sunnybrook and ambulances where their ambulance workers were telling them, "We can't take you to that hospital because there's too much traffic." And that's considering there are ambulances, or maybe that's just a call to them, okay?
Pedestrian and cyclist access between Leslie Street, Eglinton Avenue will be maintained throughout the closure. And the entry to Sunnybrook Park off of Leslie Street, north of Eglinton Avenue, outside the work zone and will be open at all times, okay? Next slide. So this is a simple schematic of what the traffic layout would be, okay? So the hash area, the yellow and black hash area, is where construction needs to occur. If we take a look at the vehicle traffic, this shows one lane in each direction on Eglinton Avenue. One lane each direction on Eglinton Avenue, okay? The traffic, sorry, the TTC stops, the temporary stops would be here and here. There would be a, the green represents the ability to walk on sidewalks to get through the area, including a connection to that temporary TTC stop. There would be signalized intersection here, a pedestrian signal here. So the only time that traffic would be stopped on Eglinton Avenue is if a pedestrian pushes the button and the lights change because a pedestrian is going back and forth across the street. The rest of the time, it's green for traffic on Eglinton Avenue. So this provides mobility for pedestrians. It also means because of this open area, cyclists will be able to go across Eglinton Avenue at this point. So there is a connection for cyclists. At Leslie Street, we show at the top the Sunnybrook Park driveway. And we show just south of there, near the last driveway, is where there would be the public vehicle turnaround facility. If somebody is somehow confused, misses all the signage, and determines that you can't get through Eglinton, this is where they'd be able to make a turnaround. At this point, no other traffic in the area except for buses. The buses will be performing a loop with an area for the transit passengers. So the transit passengers will be able to connect from here down to the east-west Eglinton Avenue routes, okay? Next slide, please. So Babyu and Eglinton, as we said, it will be done, it will be in much better condition before this closure would occur. And what does that mean? It would mean that you can make left turns in all four directions, which you can't make right now, okay? You'll have two lanes, eastbound, one lane westbound plus a left, two lanes southbound, one lane northbound. So this would be a significant improvement to what's going on there right now in terms of the ability to make turning moves. There won't be some construction going on, but there'll be much more flexibility in terms of that intersection operation. Next slide. Don Mills and Eglinton intersection. So mid-May 2019 is projected to be that you will have all lanes open on Eglinton, sorry, on Don Mills, or I mean on Don Mills, including the left turn lanes. Eastbound, two through lanes on the left. Westbound, three lanes westbound. So this intersection will be a lot easier to maneuver than it is right now. Because I know, we know it's challenging right now. So again, that provides alternate routes at the adjacent arterial roads. Next slide. So again, this is just the same type of chart that we showed you previously that shows that. At the beginning of July, Leslie, Babyu Station, Babyu Lee Side Station, all turns open. Don Mills Side Center Station, mid-May, all turns open. And this would be the point at which we would propose to do the eight weeks. And then, when it's done, in time for the fall, the school, back to school, the fall, all turns open. Get in there, get it done, all turns open. Next slide. So people might say, "Well, is that the only alternative? Why not just do some kind of construction management staging and do it in pieces?" Well, here's the implications. Keeping the intersection open for all traffic and transit would require tearing out the work in a minimum of four stages resulting in extension of the construction time from two months to six months, including all through the fall, right through the end of the year. At least four major changes in how traffic gets through the area. Each stage of the construction would be disruptive while there'd be the switch over to the new stage. It would still, it would require additional off-peak lane closures and intermediate traffic setups with associated restrictions required during the day in order to do the work, as opposed to get in, lock it off, and get it done. And when it's all done, there would be a reduced quality of road when the work is completed because you'd be putting in a whole number of joints in order to connect the asphalt, the concrete, and the track, et cetera, with higher future maintenance costs and future road or earlier and more frequent versus getting it done. Next slide. So prior to the closure, what's been, what will be done? A comprehensive advertising campaign will be launched. Canvas is scheduled for residents and businesses in the median area. Advanced signage, you've seen those portable variable message signs? And they'll be up at York Mills and Leslie, Don Mills and Lawrence, Babyu and Eglinton, Laird and Eglinton, and Don Mills and Eglinton. Local traffic-only signs installed at Lawrence and Leslie for traffic that might be headed south. Additional construction-grade signage placed at key locations, east and west of Leslie and Eglinton Avenue, north of Eglinton at Lawrence and at York Mills and south of Eglinton. TTC would provide advanced information to all the impacted transit riders. The 24/7 cross-town call center available to provide information and respond to issues. And during the closure, CrossLinks would continually monitor the situation and make adjustments as required. Next slide. TTC detours. The TTC has gone through all of their different routes and identifying what the rerouting would be so that they could still provide service. We have people here from TTC if you want to talk about specific routes and that type of thing. One of the fundamental things that people should be aware of is, we have where transit passengers would have to get off at the bottom of Leslie and go down to Eglinton to get on the bus route. Well, when the whole system is complete and the cross-town LRT is in place, that is exactly the type of transfer that transit passengers will need to make. They will get off at the bottom of Leslie, and they will get on the LRT at Eglinton, okay? So that will be the ultimate. This is about trying to find the best way of managing things through the eight weeks of construction. Next. Communications and engagement, on-street activations and info booths leading up to the event. We've identified a whole number of locations, and this applies across the entire act grade. We've done a number of these different town calls because we've been heading further east here to explain because there's closures for a number of weeks that are going to be occurring in a number of the major intersections we showed you over the course of the summer into the fall. But the good news at the end of it is that these intersections, the guideway will be done, and the majority of the construction will be done. And the intersections will be very close to the final condition. Disruption and distribution of construction notices and wayfinding postcards to businesses and residents. The Open House, we're having it now. That was the projected date at the time. Advertising, radio, print, digital, and TTC locations. Digital, social media, MetroLinks, and TTC websites. And as we said, advanced signage informing road users of the status of the intersections upstream of Eglinton. Next slide, please. There's also a whole business support program for businesses. We do have some businesses in the area. We don't have them right adjacent to the intersection like there are in other locations. There are some, but not to the density that there are at other locations. And working with all of the businesses to make clear it's open for business and help them work through this while we're doing the construction. Next slide, please. The community benefits slide, concerns of the number of jobs that are created through the course of this project is another community benefit. And next slide, please. And then, how do you stay in touch? Well, there's all sorts of ways to stay in touch. There's an app. You can sign up for it. You can go to the web. You can go to Facebook. You can go to Twitter. You can go to Instagram. You can talk to your neighbor. You can go to the different, the cross-town east office, which is at Eglinton Avenue, Babyu, if you want more information of what's going on and the status and things, et cetera, et cetera. Next, please. Okay, at this point, we're gonna open up for questions.
One thing, before we start the questions, I'd like to recognize that also councillor Jay Robinson. He would have had a...
Okay, so we'll try and take questions one at a time, and we'll try and get a microphone up there. Yes, Chris?
Thank you for that, supporting what we want to do. I just, I'm southbound Leslie at Lawrence right now. As you reach back for left turns going onto Lawrence. When you cross, close that south end off, that's gonna get worse, blocking all the streets that are trying in. Could the city put a double left turn or something in for the duration of this thing so that we don't have people coming out of the side street, can't even get on to Leslie right now?
So we'll be doing, okay, so we'll be doing a traffic plan that includes linking at the traffic signal timings at locations. And one of the things that may make it easier for southbound left turning traffic is that you won't have traffic coming from Eglinton north on Leslie towards Lawrence, which you have to compete with in order to get gaps in order to make the left turn.
It's been asked about the traffic at Coast Road maybe. The traffic at Coast Road maybe, right now, there is, you know, some traffic jam. Are you going to adjust the traffic signals there to allow more traffic to get on to Babyu?
So we'll be doing, working with City of Toronto Transportation Operations staff to come up with signal timing plans and adjustments for all the affected intersections in the area. And, and, once it's done, taking, doing a follow-up to see whether or not it's achieving what we want. And if there's adjustments that need to be made, adjustments need to be made. One of the comments I'll make is that virtually every time that you make a significant change in things, for the first several days, things don't go well until people get a better handle of it. Like, I'll tell you, one of those is, everybody always wonders the day after Labor Day, where did all this traffic come from, right? It's one of the worst days of the year. You say, "Where did everybody come from?" And so similarly, when you make adjustments to like this, where you have a significant closure, you take, you're best, you do some analysis, you implement some timings, and then you adjust as you see how traffic is flowing. So I'm just gonna go off, the microphone is being moved around the room. Oh, sorry, okay, sorry, I don't normally do this, this is my big job.
I have a question for the TTC. All of the Leslie buses are going to be dropping their passengers at Eglinton. Eglinton already will be airing the normal Eglinton buses. How many additional buses is TTC going to be putting along Eglinton, eight of the Leslie customers?
Hi. So with the closure of the intersection, we will be actually increasing service on the 34C of the Eglinton branch over to Don Mills. So currently, we operate about a 10-minute service all day, every day, as long as we're in the Southside branch. It will be increased to about eight minutes just for that branch. We'll also be implementing a Lawrence branch that avoids the construction at Leslie and Eglinton. And that will be operating at better than 10 minutes for most of the day. So we will be maintaining the capacity we have today as best as possible given the conditions.
In addition to that, we'll also be running extra buses. Run is directed, is a technical term, and the buses that are there to fill in gaps in services should they occur because of construction.
Oh, I thought it was very loud, sorry.
That's okay, we wanna make sure it be here soon.
So in addition to what Dominic said, we're also gonna be running extra buses to fill in gaps in service should they occur because of construction. So they're set aside, and they're specifically dedicated to the Eglinton border.
You just spoke about 34C, and that's what I take to come here. But that is not the issue because normally I go to Leslie and then turn on Lawrence, okay? So I would have to get off and take this bus. And I was told that the bus goes along Don Mills to go to Lawrence again?
So the question was...
I did not take the 34A to go to Victoria Park because I do not want to be bucked down at Don Mills and Eglinton right now. So I take the 51 Leslie or 54 to get up to Lawrence. So I would have to get off. And right now, even before the construction, the bus stop on the south side has been awfully precarious. Are they gonna improve that bus stop? Because I don't even go there to stop as right now, because of the construction. They're going to have to improve that bus stop. As also, the Leslie's bus, the stop is underneath a road path. It's about five-minute walk to get to the Leslie, to get the Leslie and Lawrence bus. That's a long walk for a senior.
So this is all, I guess, with the changing conditions of the road with the construction of the...
Well, I'm talking about before construction, that bus stop was not very safe.
So the suggestion I have is, you see these TTC people that are here. After we do the formal part of the meeting, please go up to them, and you can more specifically talk about the stops and the...
I'm mentioning this because there are a lot of TTC riders.
Sure.
Because I don't drive.
Okay, no, I just, I just wanted, if you wanted to talk in a bit... Okay, no, I just wanted, if you want to talk in a bit more detail, you can, you can talk to them directly.
I will, after.
If you're concerned. Great, thank you, that's great. Where's the, well, thank you, yes?
I'd like to encourage you to do a better job with your advanced signage. Best of my knowledge, there's never been a warning on Eglington going east before Leslie will read, there's no turn at Don Mills Road. Which means no one, a driver that doesn't know the area is going east to get Eglington to Don Mills Road, want to turn left, nope. Go over Vic Park, come back, not good. Put your local traffic only signs on Leslie north of Lawrence.
Yes, no, they would be north, yes.
That would be new and unusual, actually, if you drive.
Hello? Hello? Oh, sorry, okay, thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Once the dust is all settled and you've got streetcars running on that route, how is it going to affect the bus routes that exist now?
The TTC is currently undertaking a five-year service plan and a 10-year transit outlook. Over the course of this year, we will be doing transit workshops throughout the city of Toronto, mostly in June and July. As part of that plan, we will be doing a redesign of all connecting surface routes that connect to the Eglington cross-town. So that is part of the five-year plan. There will be some changes and we'll be consulting the public to discuss those changes.
I live in North East Side and we've already got a lot of problems with cars coming through nonstop and so forth. Is there any plan to, I can see that people heading west are going to want to go up, go through North East Side and go up to Bayview that way. Or is there going to be any, like, a local traffic only signs for us? Or anything to help keep our kids safe this summer?
So as I said earlier, the key to this plan is for the intersection of Bayview and Egerton to be in better shape with the ability to make turns in more lanes prior to this occurring. So making the arterial roads move better is one way of dealing with this issue. In terms of dealing with local traffic restrictions, that becomes a very community-based type of issue where it's not for us to impose or implement them. We certainly are prepared to listen if the communities deal with their councillor and propose specific approaches to things. But our effort is to make sure that the arterial intersections are in a position to handle more traffic than they have been while the construction's been going on at the intersection.
So councillor, you are here, so there's no concern. This is second thing is, Bayview is terrible road-wise. Are you going to do anything to repair roads of Don Mills and, or will any of the city department do anything to fix some of the roads that will help us watch and go there? I mean, we've got no choice, but right now they're pretty bad.
So we're dealing with the intersection specifically as part of our construction. If there's discussion about Bayview Avenue beyond the intersection, yes, that would be the responsibility of Transportation Services. Back there, yes?
Hi, with regards to the transit buses, I'd like for a suggestion that the 54 Lawrence bus go to Lawrence Station because then you don't have to come down. Increase Leslie bus on an express route, make the increase frequency. And let people know that the 88 bus that does go through B side, that should be increased as well during the construction. The other thing that I'd like to throw as a suggestion, when people are coming off the 401, at 401 and Leslie, please post signs for the people that are coming from out of town to let them know that there is a complete diversion that needs to happen before them. And let them know, get signs pointing up Lawrence and York Mills that they can go over Bayview or they can go over to the east side. Otherwise, you're going to have tourists and people, truckers, making deliveries thinking they can get through. The other thing that I'd like to bring up is this is a fire call and then there's North York General Hospital. You've got to make sure that if you're doing this construction, that the emergency vehicles can get through and emergency services, because that fire call, the next closest one is over at McCray and Laird. And I don't want people's homes or services being at risk because the services simply can't get around. The point of thought is that the Bayview and certainly Don Mills, that stuff should be cleared out by the end of May so that the public can see for themselves that yes, you are making sure that there are alternative routes. Because opening this up for construction is good and fine to get it done, we understand that. But we also have to get those alternative routes. Egerton has become a very dangerous road, not just for pedestrians and cyclists, but also for the drivers. And I'm tired of seeing, I don't drive, but I'm tired of seeing the war against cars in this city because of construction and policies that don't understand that. Take the TTC and sometimes you need to use car. And they all think everyone's going downtown. That's not the case, there are a lot of people that work outside. The jobs have gone elsewhere, thank you.
So I'm going to ask, are you just going to answer the first comment which was about the TTC route?
Yeah, okay, so with respect to rerouting the 54 to Lawrence into Lawrence Station, Lawrence Station has five bus bays and it's very congested at the moment. Over the course of the summer, there will be, we have work being done at Lawrence Station and the number of bus bays will be reduced in half. To mitigate some of the delays, we are making changes to some of the other routes.
It's a DPG, what do you expect?
Thank you for that, mother. We are making detours with some of the existing services that are going through Lawrence. We are moving the 162 to go beyond Young Street and making other adjustments as well. One of the other issues with using Lawrence Station is running a very frequent bus service through Coast Road and some of the speed humps there. It's not good for vehicle maintenance and it creates an increase in wear and tear on that.
And the comment, the comment about emergency services and being concerned about that, again, working very closely with fire, paramedic, police in order to confirm the emergency services plans and their ability to service all the communities. They are directly involved in this process. So, next, back there.
I wanted to know if there's anything else that's going to be closed during July August that might impact the traffic in that area? Will the Don Valley Parkway be closed for any sort of rides or maintenance? There's a lot of activities that happen in Sunnybrook Park where there's a lot of traffic, EMS rides and so on. All this stuff that goes on in the city for disclosures. Don Mills, Egerton, Leslie and Victoria Park often have the overflow of all that traffic.
So all of the planning for this summer is being done in conjunction with Transportation Services in order to minimize the potential for that.
But are they going to be closed for the next two months?
No. So for example, the ride for hearts in June, right, it's not in July, et cetera, et cetera. Right, so can we say there's absolutely going to be no maintenance on any roads anywhere here? No. Is there anything significant that might be going on where we're counting on that to be an alternate route? No, and that's all being coordinated this summer as part of the construction.
So there's no home closures that are going to take place in July August? The Don Valley Parkway will not be closed for anything? There's going to be nothing in the area that's going to be closed that you don't want right now?
Next, back to the back, yes, we'll start working our way forward to getting some people up front.
So first of all, I was thrilled to hear that we're going to be able to turn northbound left on Don Mills again. But I am wondering, is there any work going to be done on marking those turn lanes? Because I don't know the last time you drove through there, but it is terrifying. People get, if I drive through there at least six or seven times a week and people get stuck in the intersections.
Right, so with the leadership, yes, so the intersection.
Almost done, it looks like everything's going to be realigned, like right now it's a bit of an S-turn. So is there going to be work done marking those lanes?
Yes.
Ontario knows how to do that, they use orange stripes on the line. Very visible, very easy to redeem. Why don't you?
The mics are.
Just in case I might pass through Leslie and Egerton, I want to know, I mean, are there going to be construction machines present? Construction machines, I mean, are there going to be delays? Because it's always, I have to deal with the bowels doing that.
So is there any delays from the construction at Leslie and Egerton?
I would behold it, I want to know, I mean, I want a large vehicle, are there going to be construction machines working there?
Are there going to be construction machines?
Well, there won't be, so there will be construction vehicles on the site. There will need to be trucks delivering material to the site. That will all be managed, it won't happen during peak periods. But in order to facilitate the construction.
You presented.
Oh, back there, yes, thank you.
Because I understand that you presented two options tonight. So one option is shut the intersection down for two months.
No, not shut the intersection down.
Shut down Leslie Street.
The connection for vehicular traffic from Leslie to Egerton.
I'll qualify that by saying I drive every day. So I'd like some of the people that are on transit. I do drive every day to get downtown from the area, from north there. So if Leslie Street is shut down at that point for two months to finish the construction off, my other option is, if you don't shut it down completely, it will take six months to finish the construction in that particular area, is that right?
Yes.
Correct, so those are the two options that we were presenting. So what I was wondering is, why is there not possibly a third option of you congregating all of your construction and mobilizing more of your people into that particular area so that you can get the work done within a couple of months and still keep that particular intersection open? Now, maybe I'm the only person here that drives, but it's extremely inconvenient every day to drive from the York Mills area to get downtown to the York Mills area or wherever downtown. So can you not mobilize your construction groups from Avenue Road, Egerton, maybe finish up there for a little while so those businesses can move on? So that perhaps we can keep the intersection open?
So as you saw with a couple, I think you saw a couple of the slides, you're building a very, doing a very deep trench in order to build this. You're putting piping in, you're putting in concrete. Concrete needs time to cure. You can't make it cure any faster. You have to put the track in, so there's a certain amount of time and amount of time and effort where putting more people on it isn't going to make it go any faster. And you can't drive across it while you're doing it.
I won't keep asking questions because we'll go in circles. But the options seem to be two months or six months. And I'm sorry, but I don't see that that answers the question that I asked about curing the concrete. That that would not allow construction to get done in a two-month time, so.
As far as the six-month option, we haven't talked about the six-month option. We've looked at it, we've looked at it. And the delays when we, when we put in the track, we put in the overhead line, that we would have to shut the intersection down anyway during those times. And so whether, if we took it for six months, we would still be taking extended period of time on the block.
So we're here for you to tell us who are shutting it down for two months. Not to engage to see what the argument is, is that right?
There's no need to confirm it.
Excellent. It seems to be what the argument is.
So that is the plan that is in the contract and the CrossLinks has submitted to the city for permits. And we're presenting the whole plan in order to manage that for the eight weeks during the summer.
Does everybody here want to see the intersection shut down for a month?
No.
Next, yes. Thank you, Mark, of the Black Valley East. So as we saw in the last few months, when you're driving through that Eglington area, either Leslie, Bayview or Don Mills, there could be lane changes overnight. And that is very dangerous without advance notice, right? So you should put alternate routes, anytime you're making a change, at least one week advance notice so that people can anticipate there will be a change on Monday morning. Because that's very dangerous for people coming through all of a sudden. There was a lane and now there's no lane. And secondly is, what we observe is, a lot of tacos started to create during construction and a lot of these metal plates on top that makes the service uneven. And so it's very dangerous for cars, for people with wheelchairs or bicycle. And especially in rainy days, you know, in this case, it's not going to be snowing season. But it's very dangerous, especially when you add mud on top of it, it's very slippery. So what I'm asking is, every night, you should send a maintenance crew, go through there and fix some of these minor issues so that we avoid accidents across from our neighbors.
So CrossLinks is in the process of doing that. As everybody knows, this has been a very harsh winter. It's been a harsh winter on all the roads and road authorities all across southern Ontario are dealing with that. But I know that CrossLinks is doing that. With respect to your comment about lane shifts and changes and people getting used to things, that in fact is one of the reasons why it's proposed to do it in this fashion. It will be that way for eight weeks, all right? Not lane shifts, can you make a turn one day, can you not make it the next day? This would be it, eight weeks in the summer, get in, get it done, have it done before school returns in the fall. That's the approach. Yes, back?
I'm not sure if I heard this correctly, but like the gentleman at the back, I have to do a lot of driving as well, I live in Victoria Village, which is just off Sloan. And did I hear correctly that Sloan and Bermonsey will be closed for 18 weeks?
The way Sloan and Bermonsey will look is it'll be like two T intersections. So you'll be able to, from the north, you'll be able to turn on and off Egerton to the north and you will be able to turn off and on of Egerton from the south side. But what you won't be able to do is you won't be able to drive completely across Egerton. You won't be able to make left turns onto those side streets or left turns off of them. They'll operate as two T intersections. However, Credit Union and Swift will be, will be open for full movements adjacent to that area. So that's part of the traffic management strategy. Yes?
I, I live at the Leslie-Leeds Lawrence area, just north of Beverly's Gardens. And presently, we have gridlock there continuously due to the traffic trying to get away from Egerton. I'm sure a lot of people are quite aware of it. What are, you're saying, well, we're not, we're only worried about the arterial. Well, with Lawrence being the last main intersection before the shutdown, what, how are you going to control, how, it's going to supposedly get to be impossible because they're going to want to make a right, right turn and go to Bayview. And, you know, when they had the water main break there, it was one hour going from the Leslie intersection to Bayview.
So the approach is to make sure that Don Mills is a better route than it has been because it has been, it's been a challenging intersection, it's challenging right now. And to have Bayview as a better location and to have more advanced notice so that people are in anticipation, planning to change the route. Again, during the summer, there's more people that take vacation, there's more people that can adjust their trips. There isn't people taking people to school and that type of thing. So from that point of view, the background traffic shouldn't be as much as it is during the regular part of the year. Regardless, there's going to be congestion.
Yeah, I know, but with the fact that your last main intersection before the total shutdown is Lawrence, how are you going to control, especially when you've got Lawrence being a two-lane road weaving through the private path and then all through there? And it gets all backed up. How are you going to, how are you going to control that? I mean, I'm not living quite in that, I'm living just slightly north of it. But if you're trying to get out, it's totally impossible. And you're saying that, hey, we're not worried about that. That's other people's responsibility.
No, I didn't say we aren't worried about it. I'm saying we have control over the operation of the intersections where we are doing our construction. We can put together a transportation management plan, but we, as CrossLinks, can't go into a local community and start putting in no right turn, no left turns.
Well, you should be able to, at least coordinate it with the local municipal personnel.
So, all of this is being reviewed and done in conjunction with the City of Toronto Transportation Services Department.
Okay, because really, right now, it, the, the, the traffic is diverse. Going through there because it's trying to avoid the Eglington traffic.
But it's also doing that because of Bayview, and it's doing that because of Don Mills. What we are saying will be in a better position to handle some of that traffic that is shifted. While this is going on. Okay, yes, back?
I have a quick question, but we can see, um, if I understand correctly, the large bus is going to come down Don Mills, rather than down Leslie. I wonder why? Because we, unless it's the Leslie Street bus, we turn around. Because we on Leslie there show some more, uh, some of Lawrence. We're going to get down, we've got one turn of service, we're already there. On Lawrence, between Don and Leslie, we're going to go to none.
Okay, so I think the question was, why is the bus going down to Don Mills, the Lawrence bus?
Yes.
And why can't it go to the Leslie and Eglington turnaround? Is that correct? Okay, so, actually, as part of the plan, we are having, we would have, uh, two or three branches of Lawrence East service. Uh, the A and the B today. Uh, one goes to Orton Park, one goes to Starspray, those are out in Scarborough. Uh, those two branches would still provide service down Leslie and use the Leslie turnaround. So, you can see it, uh, on the image here. So, that's a fifty-four A, fifty-four B, and they'll turn around at this, uh, at the U-turn. We'll be implementing a new branch of the fifty-four, the fifty-four C, from Eglington Station, uh, across Eglington and then up Don Mills, and then across Lawrence to the Lawrence M S R T station. So, service on Lawrence, uh, sorry, on Leslie at Lawrence will still be maintained. Albeit, you won't be able to take a one-seat ride down to Eglington Station because of the closure. Uh, but you will be able to make a connection at Eglington and Leslie.
What happens?
Yes?
What happens when you actually don't meet your time line? As promised, one? Because nothing about this whole system has been on time.
The question was, if there, what's the guarantee we meet those timelines?
Where, where we're at, and you say nothing has been on time.
We've spoken enough, had this been long ago?
Yeah. I'm not, I'm not aware of, of everything that should have been in long ago, but it, as far as where we are on schedule, in, in every area, we are, we are on schedule. And the schedule that we put up here, you're going to see it, you're going to see it firsthand. Eight weeks, and, and, and so you'll, you'll see how we progress through each intersection.
And when you don't?
We will. And that, when I spoke about, when I, when I spoke about, uh, we're, we're taking action to take the weather out of it, and we're taking a lot of precautions and looking at a lot of things in order to guarantee that we're going to, we're going to meet those targets.
Yes?
Give us, uh, what will it look like when you're done? Will, will, when you've finished the Leslie intersection, will Eglington now be fully open? Is this, is this the carrot? The stick is that we have to wait for you to close the road. When it's open, do we celebrate? Because it'll be much better than it is?
Yes.
You didn't promise anything?
Yes.
Yes.
Why didn't you promise anything?
Eglington will be open in both directions with two lanes.
Two lanes in each direction?
Yes.
How long will you?
Yes?
Uh, just quick, excuse me, quick questions regarding the, uh, bus stops. About the bus stops, I'd love to see, is there going to be a bus lay-by area? So that the buses don't just stop and it-
Yes, that's right. They will be, in a lay-by area, they will not be blocking the traffic lanes while they're picking up or dropping off passengers.
Thank you and good luck.
Hi, Ron. Could you please turn it to the slide with the Eglington and Leslie? I have two, two questions.
Okay. Okay, yes?
Um, my first question is, um, the one-lane both ways? Uh, how, how many meters to the east and west is it going to be restricted to one lane?
Very mild, one lane each way.
Yes, it's one lane in each direction, but at what point does it, does the cross-section change?
It's existing as right now.
So, it'll be the same as it is, uh, correct?
Yes. So, all the way to Bradcliffe, right along?
Yes.
Okay, and then east? Okay, okay. My, my second concern is that, um, small kind of walkways, is there going to be stoplights there? Um, and because it doesn't really look like a regular intersection.
So, this?
Yes.
Well, yes, this will be, this will be, uh, this will be signalized. This will be a pedestrian signal. So, and, and so, and in fact, if you look at it, really, the crossing distance where you are crossing traffic is this piece at the bottom. Because, because this will be the, the construction area. So, you're walking this whole way. But as far as where you need to stop traffic with the traffic lights in order to cross is to cross these two lanes of, of, of traffic.
And where will the fifty-four bus be?
So, there's the one stop there, and this, this is not to scale. This is a, this is a diagram so that people can understand. So, this, this is for the westbound stop, and the eastbound stop is over here.
Where do you get all the fifty-four bus after the road is closed?
Um, can I just ask a question? Where, where are you traveling to?
If you're taking a bus from Eglington to Leslie Street, having to transfer from, from Eglington to get the fifty-four bus to go north and along Lawrence, where do you get it?
So, if you are traveling along Lawrence, east of Don Mills, you can stay-
I'm on-
You're traveling Egerton.
Egerton, taking a bus along Eglington, I presume that will still run in the summer?
Yes.
You get off at Leslie Street in order to go north. Where do you get the fifty-four bus?
So, fifty-four bus, like I said, there were three branches. Two of the branches would serve this stop here, that's at the bus booth. And then there would be one branch that does, that continues on Egerton and goes up Don Mills.
I know that.
So, Don Mills is on.
Yeah, I'm not concerned about the one going east. I'm concerned about the one going north.
Okay.
And how far does a person have to walk to get there?
That's in the following slide, it's four minutes from this bound here.
It's, uh, can I close that? So, if we're, we're estimating you are transferring from the eastbound to the northbound movement, it would be a approximate four-minute walk?
Right here.
That's a four-minute walk, that's our guess right now. And if you're coming from a southbound to westbound movement, that's a two-minute walk. An average three per turn.
What about the sixty-one, uh, way bus? Would that be increased to be at least fifteen minutes instead of half an hour?
Sixty-two.
The one sixty-two? Okay. So, the one sixty-two, yeah, the one sixty-two, yeah, Lawrence-Don Mills. Uh, so, that one, yes, does run at every half an hour right now. Uh, the, as Park, so, Park mentioned previously that Lawrence Station is under construction. So, we are a little limited as to what we can do with that bus.
Well, that's not there. I mean, you're going to be giving away at least half the city.
Well, that, that bus will still be maintained, yes. But it will still be running at a very minute service.
Actually, I'm going to talk to you what your concern is. For the bus going westbound is closer than where the bus stop is now. Because, um, the, under, uh, where the railroad line is, that's where the bus stop is right now. It's going to be closer to Leslie with the new one, which is better.
So, so I want to get back to where we're giving people an opportunity to speak. Again, afterwards, as Steve said, after we're done doing these questions, we will be staying around, if people want to talk to people specifically about specific concerns, we will stay here and we will, we will listen to the comments and questions.
And one more at the back here.
Okay.
What penalties will the builder face if you don't meet your eight-week guarantee?
We have, we, we don't have a penalty, uh, built in, built into the contract. And, and, and so, as far as penalty, it would be construction time. But we, we will not open or start another intersection until we complete here. There we have it.
Yes, back?
First off, thanks.
So, I'm going to ask, so, if we could please let people ask questions. We, we are quite quiet, we let other people ask questions. I want to make sure that we give people an opportunity. Yes?
First off, thanks very much for taking the time to meet with us tonight. Really appreciate it. I know you guys are on the clock now, and so, it's great that you do this. Second, I know that July, August is probably the best time to do this because traffic is at least in that area. And because school's out, people aren't working and stuff. But the problem is that Sunnybrook Park during that time hosts a lot of kids programs as well as sporting activities. And main access is from the city. And so, you're going to be cutting off that access. And I bet most people who are using that this summer will have no idea that this is loaded. The second point is, TTC has gotten very adaptive replacing their, their track beds in a couple of weeks' time. So, I'm very surprised and skeptical that you've planned two months to do what is really forty meters of, of track bed. There must be a way, I would say, like, I would ask the TTC to maybe use their expertise, let the teachers do it. Uh, concrete is not taken much to fill, so there's got to be a way to do it.
So, I guess the first comment would be, compared to a streetcar in downtown Toronto, the trench and the size of this guideway is a whole greater scale than when you see in other locations for streetcars. And that's why we tried to demonstrate that with some of the photographs to show how deep the trench has to be, the large communication.
I'm, I'm very, I'm an engineer. I'm very good at designing a policy. I'm very good with what's right here. So, it's a great project. But I know that you can put, we're on the zone twenty-four hours for a two-week period and get this done, uh, easily.
So, are there any, any other questions?
I guess we'll take one more question?
No response?
No, no response. And then we'll stay up there and answer, answer the questions with that.
I'd appreciate some insight on that.
No insight?
Well, just the responses, we've gone through a, a complete construction engineering plan and, and the timeframe we're taking, it is the time, is the timeframe that it will take to work. When you talk about twenty-four hour working, we, we, we are faced with inability to do that and the disruption to the neighborhood in, in, in doing that. Uh, it is something that we could, we could explore, working twenty-four hours and see what, see what we could, what we could knock off of. Yeah, appreciate it.
At the stage that the economy is right now, how much space can be unable to get up and running? Because I see this sort of like the long subway part to waiting for the big huge rebuild. If they got Eglington, from Eglington West up and sort of able to get going, it would be nice for the residents and for the community and for the city if you could get that instead of waiting for the big huge rebuild. It's up, do it in ignorance, if the increment is up to state, been tested in truth, and get it going. And I would have liked it, had they started the Eglington West to the Eglington Station, why they didn't put the new streetcars on St. Clair from St. Clair Station, St. Clair West, and encourage people to use that group? Why the construction was being going on from Eglington to Eglington West in? It's about thinking outside of the box and getting an alternative route to get the city moving.
I'm not really sure what the, what the question is there. What I, what I will, what I will tell you, what I will tell you that you will see in, in the at grave section, the at grave section is a complete section, and you will see vehicles out here. The second area that we test will be this area. And, and if things continue to go as planned, we can look at doing something quicker out here with the potential of doing something quicker. I don't want to set any expectations to that, but, but that's what we're going to work to.
Hi, I live at Lawrence and Leslie, work around Eglington and Bayview and also Leontown. And the only way for me to get really out of my neighborhood and down that way is through Eglington and, and Leslie. When you close that intersection off, traffic already is unbearable through Leslie and Lawrence? And you're saying that you have no bail, a police there to direct traffic? Would that be an option?
So, one of the, one of the strategies that we do use at times is the use of pay-duty officers.
I've never seen one pay-duty officer-
I'm not, I'm not-
At Leslie and Bayview or Leslie.
I'm, I'm not saying, I, I'm not saying we've already done that at intersection. I said, people raise the issue of pay-duty officers. Usually, the use of pay-duty officers is more tied to locations where, for example, it's difficult for pedestrians to get across the street or because of the unusual circumstances of the construction. That's more usually done at the actual construction sites that, that are occurred. So, at a location like Leslie and Lawrence, the, the whole issue is, you're talking about, is there capacity, right? And does the background traffic change? To have a pay-duty officer to direct traffic one way or another versus the traffic lights, I, I don't know that there's that much of a, of a, of a benefit. The bigger benefit is, if you provide alternate routes that can take more traffic. As I said before, a challenge you have with Leslie and Lawrence is because of the construction that's been occurring at Don Mills and Eglington and at Bayview and Eglington, which puts more pressure on Leslie. And our position is, by having Don Mills better able to handle traffic and Bayview better able to handle traffic, and putting signage up in advance, warning and communicating to intercept traffic before it gets down to Leslie, that that has a better, uh, potential to deal with traffic issues at Leslie and Lawrence. Does it mean that Leslie and Lawrence won't have challenges? No, it does not. But that is the strategy that we're proposing in order to deal with it.
There are some other alternatives that I don't know if you have ever considered. There's a way to get through Sunnybrook Park from Leslie to Bayview. And there's also a way to get through Glenin College from Leslie to Bayview. Has there been any consideration of opening up those two alternate routes? Although it's through-
So, I will tell you, that has never been discussed. And there would be, there would be concerns about turning those into commuter routes.
Temporarily, it's a closure question.
It's a day camp there. It's a day camp there at the bottom of that hill.
Any other?
It's, um, there's already tra, uh, chaos at Lawrence and Leslie, mainly cars. Were you considering keeping heavy trucks of Lawrence out of Lawrence and Leslie during this time? Because that meant the traffic chaos would be a lot worse.
So, as a takeaway, we can talk to Transportation Services about dealing with the, uh, with truck routes and truck traffic during, during the summer. So, we'll take that as a takeaway. Yes?
Hi, I worked right at Leslie and Eglington. Earlier, you said something about you're still seeking the permit. Does seeking the permit and getting the permit impact starting and completing the July, August timeframe?
Yeah, yes, we, yes, permits need to be granted in order to proceed with the construction. They have not been issued.
So, if they haven't been issued, how can you be so sure you'll start on time and complete it?
This is the schedule, this is what we proposed, and, and, and this is what we're seeking to do. This is the schedule, this is what we proposed, and, and, and this is what we're seeking to do.
Are there any reasons to believe the permitting process won't go through and, or at least won't start on time?
We, we currently work very close with the city and, and on the permit, permitting side. Uh, several of the permits that have been delayed have been broke loose on, on the, on, in this area, and we continue to work with them, and, and when we submit the application, within twenty days, we generally receive a response. And that's, the, we are, we are counting on permits.
I'm sorry, I need to bring this up again, this is gonna be this biggest nightmare of all, right now. As the other gentleman here is gonna mention, at rush hour, the traffic stops heading up through Post Road all the way to four, Leslie. When you take two lanes of traffic and drop them down to one, going up the hill through the Post Road area, there's no lights in the Post Road areas, you're gonna need police to guide the car and keep them moving. Because the majority of people will get over to, will want to get over to Bayview that way instead of going through Yorkville or going down through Eglington, through Don Mills. So again, Don Mills gets busy, if something happens on the DDP, Don Mills will stop. So what my fear is, and I take my husband over to Sunnybrook Park, is the fact that Lawrence will probably get back though, maybe even to the DDP, I don't know if they're gonna be able to get out because so many people take that route now. Everybody's gonna take that route now. So again, you're probably gonna have to put police in those areas where it comes down to a four-way stop.
So, so you're talking about Post Road and that?
Post Road.
I guess my earlier comment had been, having a police officer at Leslie and Lawrence wasn't really going to serve any purpose. So that's what, that's the question, that was what I was answering at some point.
That's, that's the problem.
So your comment is, so as a takeaway, the whole comment is the, the traffic management strategy, working with City of Toronto Traffic Operations for the Post Road here.
Yes.
Yes.
Plus, do the, do the people who live on the Post Road know what's going to happen? And secondly, um, Wilson Bus, the, the westbound bus, the Lawrence Bus, don't the westbound bus go through Post Road? You gotta remember, only if there are stone signs.
No, no.
The westbound Lawrence bus will go to Post Road.
Where will it go?
The westbound Lawrence bus will go down to a church facility at Egerton and Leslie.
To the turnaround?
Yes. So the Don Way bus will continue to go to, go to Post Road, that's to...
I, I understand, not living in the area, you don't realize what it's like at rush hour, out of, out of, and Les, and Lawrence, a lot of, a lot of people's roads. They, they wanted the roads under home.
So, we are, we are aware, we are aware that there's congestion, there's been backups, and that this has been challenging for cross...
Before this.
We're aware of, and it was, it was, it was like that before this, yes, thank you. And so, our approach, and what we have been working with the City Auto Metrolinks and TTC is that the best way to get Leslie and Egerton done and back to before all of this is to do this for eight weeks in the summer and get it done.
I understand.
Right, so that's, that's the, that's the approach, get it done.
I understand.
But somehow force the traffic before it gets down to Lawrence.
And so, the traffic management plan is to try and intercept traffic, alright? But drivers still make their decision, but the, the drivers make their decision based on their own experiences. And as I said, if, and if they are encountering that kind of congestion, and meanwhile, if Don Mills Road is operating better than it has been operating, drivers will choose to take Don Mills Road, or they will adjust the trip, or they won't make the trip, or they'll be on vacation. Or maybe all of it, or maybe they're driving their kids to school because it's the summertime, all of those things.
Where they drive North York Mill.
You all I'm saying is you have to do whatever you can to keep that traffic going. Because when you're taking all these cars down to one lane, it's, it's, they're not gonna be moving, it's ridiculous. So you have to...
Takes an hour, it's totally crazy.
When you keep the box moving though, or what?
I have a suggestion.
I just, I just want to make sure we're, we're handing the microphone around.
I have a suggestion. Why don't the people, instead of taking the, going south along Eglington, well, going south along Eglington on buses, take the bus north and get on the subway at Fairwood Mall? And take the subway along Shepherd and use it down to the, uh, downtown.
We're, we're hoping, we're hoping that a number of people, and this is, we're out here, this has been planned for months, we're talking to, beginning of April, of something that's planned for three months from now. And we're, the plan is to keep advertising this and making people aware so that they start to plan for this well in advance as opposed to being surprised. Will some people be surprised? Yes, even if you walked up and walked into their living room and explained, they still said they were surprised. But, but every effort will be made to communicate and make sure there's great awareness.
Okay, everyone, this is the last question, and then the, that will be taken around if anyone has anything further.
Thank you. For all the chaos we've been through so far, what's two more months? Complete chaos, deep town.
Thank you, thank you very much, everybody, thanks for the patience, thanks for your questions. As the staff will be here, happy discussion, I get your input, thank you.